ACMI productions are only made possible with your support. Visit patreon.com/ACMI to learn how you can help.
Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on August 19th, 2024. I'm Select Board Chair Steve DeCoursey. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hy- no, tonight, it is in a hybrid, well, hybrid format, consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following. This meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, we ask that you provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on Zoom can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board agendas and minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in their confirmation email for a backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be an opportunity for public comment tonight during open forum. If you are attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand when I announce that public comment is open. We have 20 items on our agenda tonight. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done. So with that, we will move right to item two, presentation on the master plan by Claire Ricker, the Director of Planning and Community Development. Good evening, Ms. Ricker.
Good evening. Thank you. Great. Is that better? All right. Great. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Claire Ricker, and I'm your Director of Planning and Community Development here for the Town of Arlington. Thank you for having me. Tonight's presentation will be a summary of the information session we held last February in anticipation of the master plan project launch. Tonight, I'm here to update you on the work in progress to update the plan, the master plan of 2015, Your Town, Your Future, and we'll look forward to the next 10 years to establish goals and objectives that will bring us through to the year 2035, 2036. We're calling this process of the Arlington Master Plan Update AMP Up, which is fitting as we envision that this process will result in an updated master plan that reflects the energy and enthusiasm for Arlington that's so evident in the community. So quickly tonight, we'll go over briefly what is master planning. We'll look back at the master plan of 2015. We'll look at the planning process, including roles and responsibilities, the project status and the timeline, and we'll go over next steps. Thank you. So what is a master plan? A master plan is a general plan. Sometimes it's a land use plan, but it's a document designed to guide the future of a community. It is an expression of municipality's goals and recommended action to achieve those goals. It's an outline for orderly growth, providing continued guidance for decision-making. It's a document focusing on immediate and long-range protection, enhancement, growth and development, and it's a document we can turn to when verifying priorities for immediate and long-term growth, preservation and conservation. Characteristics of a master plan are that it's comprehensive, it's long-term, it's general, and that it's focused primarily on physical development. A master plan serves a number of functions. It provides continuity to the community over time. It balances competing interests. It protects public and private investment in infrastructure. It plans for development in a way that protects valued resources, and it allows people to express a collective vision for their community. The brief, brief process for creating a master plan includes oversight. A committee is created or already exists to oversee the creation of the plan. Qualitative and quantitative data is collected on the existing conditions of the town, a series of forums, meetings and surveys designed to engage the public and get citizen feedback, at which point the feedback is incorporated into a plan draft. Data is analyzed. Goals and recommendations are made based on what the data shows. For example, and this is an example, if the data shows that the housing stock is not keeping up with demand, then a master plan will likely have a section about how to increase the number of housing units available after the goals and recommendations are created with community input. The role of the community in a master plan, join master plan committees and working groups, attend public meetings, design charrettes, office hours either in person or virtually, complete surveys and other data collection devices, and of course, continue the conversation with your friends and neighbors. Because planning should be proactive, not reactive. You know, there are certainly several examples of controversial development here in town that people have wanted to express, you know, their, their opinion about, that, you know, perhaps in a negative way, that's considered reactive planning. A development that's based on shared goals and objectives, that's proactive planning. We can agree on the goals, but we might and often do disagree on the actions necessary to achieve the goals. So what is a master plan in Massachusetts? A master plan in Massachusetts is governed by Mass. General Law. There are nine required elements, including a goals and policies statement and an implementation plan. The seven study areas included in a master plan in Massachusetts are land use, determining where our opportunities are for new growth, where our opportunities may be for preservation and conservation, housing, a plan that meets the community's housing needs, economic development, providing data-driven strategies for promoting and enhancing business opportunities in the town, arts and culture, a plan for protection and enhancement of historic and natural resources, including potentially a plan for public art, open space, a plan for enhancing and maintaining the town's open space and recreation facilities, public assets, a plan for expansion and improvement of public infrastructure facilities and assets, and then of course, transportation, which is a plan for movement of both people and goods in the town. So it's seven study areas plus a statement on goals and policies and an implementation plan. And the statement on goals and policies is derived from public outreach and data collection. These goals and policies should be incorporated into other policies and ordinances in the community, for example, the zoning ordinance or maybe the capital improvement plan. Master planning at a glance, Jimmy, you can go through these until we get to. Thanks. That looks a lot cooler when I'm doing it. Master planning at a glance, identify issues in the community, existing conditions, survey the public, and survey the public over and over and over again. List goals based on that public outreach and communication. Go back to the public again and make sure that we got the goals right. Prepare the plan, a plan draft. Consider alternatives. There will be, I'm sure, plenty of alternatives and plenty of input following presentation of a plan draft. Then we adopt the plan, implement the plan, and then finally, we evaluate the plan. Which brings us to the 2015 Master Plan, Your Town, Your Future. So how do we know when it's time to update the plan? Well, first, we see how old our existing plan is. No one-size-fits-all, but our last master plan did say 10 years. Have the goals and objectives from our previous plan been met? If not, why? Has there been rapid growth or decline? Is the community younger, aging? What are our population demographics? Is new infrastructure needed? What are some economic changes that may impact overall planning and development in the town? And has development been inconsistent or spotty and maybe not in line with the goals and visions of the town? This next graphic was developed as part of the community outreach process to establish goals and visions for the 2015 plan. And then this was the 2015 master plan process over two years, including information gathering up to master plan proposals, recommendations, plan adoption, which they estimated in April 2015. I believe they met that schedule and then an update in 2025. And we are here, 10 years later. All right. So some goals and policies from the 2015 master plan, one from land use, which is goal number two, to encourage development that enhances the quality of Arlington's natural resources and the built environment. The recommended actions to achieve that goal were the recodification of the zoning bylaw, which was completed in 2019, and adoption of design guidelines for commercial industrial sites, which is underway in 2024. Some more goals and policies, this time from the transportation section. Goal number two, enhance mobility and increase safety by maximizing transit, bicycle and pedestrian access, and other alternative modes of transportation. The recommended actions to achieve that goal, adopt a complete streets policy, which was done in 2016, connect Arlington Sustainable Transportation Plan, which was published in 2021. There are several other supporting documents that came out of the 2015 master plan, including the Arlington Heights Neighborhood Action Plan, the Economic Analysis of Industrial Districts, Residential Design Guidelines, the Net Zero Action Plan, the update to the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and the list, you know, goes on. So next steps. The ARB has appointed a new master plan update advisory committee, the AMP Up Advisory Committee. The draft request for proposals for planning consultants has been drafted by staff and by the AMP Up Committee. That was advertised, I believe, last week. Town staff and AMP Up Advisory Committee will review proposals and interview consultants. That's due to occur the first week of October. The planning consultants selected in project kick off before the end of the year. So this is a timeline for the 2024 master plan update. You can see we're third item in, issue RFP for consultant with the goal of bringing a master plan update to town meeting in 2026. All right. So the 2024 AMP Up Advisory Committee, this says up to 12 community members. We expanded it to 13, plus two representatives from the redevelopment board and one from the select board. It's a two-year commitment, meets monthly over Zoom through 2024. We may meet, or we likely meet more frequently through 2025, and we are seeking a select board volunteer for the committee. I would have made this presentation earlier this summer. This was, I think, the soonest I could get it and ask for a volunteer. So thank you very much for your attention this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Ricker. And before I open it up to board members for, for questions or comments, I just wanted to summarize a couple of things beyond what was said. And I have, I have a copy of the 2015 master plan here, and it's been a really worthwhile document. And following the creation of the master plan, a master plan implementation committee was created that was just dissolved earlier this year, but that, their work is still on the town's website. I think their last report to town meeting was in 2022. But for those of you interested in looking at what had happened during the master plan period, they kept the grid of all the goals, what's happening. If something was done, it was marked off, the areas of responsibility, and it, a real good comprehensive document for that. And as Ms. Ricker said, the Chapter 41, Section 81D deals with master plans. It's the redevelopment board as planning board for the town that is responsible for creation of the master plan and, and for any updates. And so a, a majority vote of the redevelopment board is all that's necessary to update the plan. Past practice has been back in 2015 to seek endorsement from the select board, or selectmen at that time, and, and from town meeting. I imagine that's going to be the same time period. So just again, before I open it up to, to board members, the last master plan committee, advisory committee, I believe the select board members may have been liaisons from the board to the, to the actual committee. Mr. Curro, Joe Curro and Steve Byrne were the two liaisons. I think Joe continued on after Steve left the board. So again, something to talk about. I appreciate being asked for members, but I'd like to hear if there's any member interest, first of all, but whether a discussion is, are we, is it more appropriate for us to be a liaison as opposed to a member where you already have 15 members on the board and it's going to be the product of the redevelopment board? So with that, I went on a little longer than I thought I would. I'll open it up to board members for any questions, comments.
Eric, I'm gonna try to go last in case someone cuts my thing.
All right. Eric's volunteering.
All right. Mr. Hellmuth.
I'm going first so that I give everybody else the opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Ricker, for excellent presentation. That was very tight, but also very substantial, and that's not easy to do. I had a question, and this is something I thought about for a while in my years of living with master plan and all the various other plans that we produce, and that is, how do you see the relationship of, say, I think you mentioned, you know, the master plan identifies, I love us as responsive to data. If we need a need for housing, it's going to go in there. You know, we also have to do a housing production plan for other purposes. You know, we have the, we have the other plans that grew out of this. We've done other land use planning. So, you know, how do you see the master plan coexisting and working with these other planning documents that we produce?
That's an excellent question. Thank you. I think, you know, we are doing a master plan update. We're not going to do a master plan whole cloth like the 2015 master plan. I see those other planning documents that came out, you know, that were, were part of that 2015 plan or, you know, were developed, you know, for, for other reasons, you know, perhaps identified in the plan, perhaps not, as contributing certainly to the update. And I think, you know, as we look back, I mean, the Sustainable Transportation Plan at this point is four years old. And, you know, it's, it's, I hate to say plans beget other plans, but they kind of do. And so these documents that have come out of the original master plan are due to be updated in a way, I think, that falls under master planning itself. It's time for us to go back and look at goals, visions, et cetera, from the community in light of these seven study areas. So I do see, definitely contributing, certainly a point of data for us to reflect on and include as we're moving forward in the planning process, but, you know, you know, at this point, I hate to say they're out of date, but they're certainly something that we're looking towards completing as we go.
Well, it's helpful. Thank you. It was, even just in this brief presentation and in reviewing the slides before the meeting, it was really gratifying to see that we are holding ourselves to measuring the progress that we're making and the deliverables. And the town has done that for a number of years. I think it's a credit to leadership from everywhere, from the town manager's office to the planning department, to other town staff, to the board itself, certainly to the redevelopment board primarily. And so I'm really excited about kicking this, this project off because I think with the town's track record of setting itself goals that it can measure and setting itself goals that it is willing to track, we're, it's really, really useful. I was curious, I actually did not know that this was prescribed in, in Mass. General Law, and Chapter, so Chapter 41, Section 81D even says that the, the redevelopment board may, may update it, but, but from time to time may extend or perfect such plan. So, you know, aim high, right?
Yeah, sure.
And sometimes the language of legislatures is, is really amusing, but I think an update is probably sufficient.
Yeah.
And finally, I really like the, the branding of the name and the logo for this. I think that will be really important, though, for community engagement, for getting that in people's mind, so that when they are approached and they are proactively surveyed, they can say, oh yeah, I've heard about this before, I want to be part of it. So kudos for that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
As to the chair's question, I think, for the board, I, I don't feel strongly about it either way. I think, I do think a liaison would be sufficient. I really appreciate being asked to participate, however form that takes.
Thank you, Mr. Hellmuth.
I thought you said you wanted to go last.
Oh, yeah. No, I didn't know. I didn't know.
Mr. Diggins?
Well, I would actually go recommend Mr. Hurd, because I'd like to see younger people being involved in this. You know, I think we, since it's about the future, you know, I think we, people under 50, you know, this will affect them more than those of us being over 50. I think it's important to get as much input from younger people as possible, because once again, I mean, it's going to affect them more. And also, I mean, it's harder to get younger people, but I think it's worth it, you know, and, 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 I mean, they sometimes, I mean, sometimes I think we underestimate, I mean, their understanding, you know, of, of the situation, you know, and to the extent that they may lack understanding, they can get it very quickly. So, so that was one reason why I was going to recommend you, especially since it's a liaison position now, so, and, and, and I know, I know time is a premium.
But we're still talking about.
Yeah. So, so that's, that's my, my argument for that. I mean, my question, though, is, I mean, what, how does leadership factor into this? The reason I ask that is that, you know, I read the resolution too, and, and the nature of the input will lend itself more to the status quo. You know, I mean, when you go around asking people what they want, they generally don't want bold change. They don't want transformational change. You know, I mean, they're very, it's like, incremental, small changes, yeah, you know, but they're generally not going to go for something big. I mean, it takes real leadership, I mean, to get something big. And so how does that factor into this process?
I think that's an interesting question. I think, you know, this is a document that is more visionary, I think, and, and aspirational, as you mentioned, than it, than it is, you know, a sort of a checklist of, of things to do. I don't anticipate, you know, as part of this process, that any specific project, one way or the other, would be identified as, you know, something that, that we would, you know, short of saying, you know, let's just look at this in general, let's just, let's look at Arlington Center, say, for example, generally. I, I think that it, it's, it's a document that I think, you know, really strikes a balance between, you know, you know, actual physical development and, and visionary statement. And so I think that's really what we're aiming for at this point is, you know, what, you know, as part of the MBTA Communities process, I think, you know, trying to identify what some of the goals are for the community, try to tease those out. That is really our challenge here. And I think, you know, it will take, it will take leadership, you know, certainly to get us there. But I do think that, you know, we, we need to be really clear about what this document is and what this document isn't. It isn't necessarily a development plan per se. It really is, you know, a visionary document.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. I don't think, if you want, if you have a rebuttal for that.
I felt like retaliation from my wisecrack in the last meeting. I mean, as long as the group meets at 11:00 PM, I'm happy to participate. I mean, if it's a liaison position and we create two liaisons, I think then that would be fine, because we can participate in a, in a meeting with two people and not have a quorum of the board. So I'm happy to serve in that role.
Just a question from, when is the next meeting of the advisory committee?
It's the first Thursday of the month.
Okay.
I think that's September 5th.
Okay. So I know there was a similar situation at the redevelopment board where I don't think you had all five members, and there was two members who expressed interest, and then there was an official vote afterwards, because we don't meet until September 9th. So as we ask the questions, and we haven't heard yet from Mrs. Mahan, but we can talk about timing. We don't necessarily have to decide what we're going to do this evening, but thank you for, for further information on the meeting date. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. And also, I spoke to the chair about this after the fact, but as you know, I went in as an individual, the night that you were announcing in the redevelopment board, the makeup of the committee members, and I had put three scenario suggestions, and I said, I'm a big girl, if you choose not to do any of them, which you did, that's fine. And the reason I say that is, I've seen this with the previous master plan, which went down a road and started to get, sort of had to deal with more of the negative than the actual purpose, then there was a reset and it worked out. And saw the same thing with MBTA Communities. And, and I say this with all sincerity and not, you know, denigrating or speaking poorly of, of any individual. That's my very real concern right now, and I sort of see it starting off that way, which as Mr. Diggins pointed out, you know, change is difficult. I'd like to see of the seven, maybe three really big changes from this committee. If we could get seven really big changes, that would be great, too, but I'm just trying to, I always think the worst and, and put it low. So, so I am concerned in terms of that. So what I would say to my colleagues is, and I also think, if you're a member of this committee, especially when it gets really moving, and I have had conversations with Ms. Ricker and with Mr. Benson as an individual, but it's, I think it's not going to just be the monthly meetings. I think when the subcommittees get formed, that's going to be a commitment, which, and I'm not saying anything negative, I'm saying in terms of this board individually. If I had my druthers and if I had my way, because I did have a lot to say at the redevelopment board, because I, I, like everyone, want, want this to get off on the right foot, if we have two liaisons, that would be great, but I, I would still like to take advantage of the opportunity that it appears we're being asked for a full member appointment, because I certainly have someone in mind. One of the things I'm very concerned about, as I've discussed with you all, and the answer was back, well, you could tell that person or those people joined subcommittees, I want to, I would like to see it a little bit more diverse. So if the select board had two liaisons, but also if we utilize the fact that we can appoint somebody and maybe put names forth, I certainly have a name. Just because I have the captive, captured audience, I'm going to take advantage of this. When I said three of the seven, I'd like to see really big changes, and it's just me, I'd like to see seven, all seven areas, big changes, but that's not, and just sort of getting the gauge and the pulse of people out there. The housing, economic development, transportation, those are the three that really, you know, we have to focus on all seven, but those are the three I'd really like to see us make inroads. Those are the three, as Mr. Hellmuth pointed out, I'd like to sort of piggyback on, on his comments, that I think it's going to take a lot of balancing in terms of, I'll take transportation. I want to make sure that the, we had a goals session for the board and with the town manager, and especially around transportation issues that have come before this board, that I know my colleagues on the redevelopment board and Ms. Ricker are also aware of, but we have had discussions and the manager has sort of outlined his criteria, whether addressing it, and if I say anything incorrect, I want you to raise your hand and, and correct me, but coming up with some solutions, you know, perhaps vis-à-vis the capital planning, perhaps some other vehicles. He didn't say this, but I don't know if opera, if any of that is left over. And I want to make sure, as Mr. Hellmuth pointed out, and I think you've already answered this and you're cognizant of it, that on that particular issue, there is coordination. So that, I would hate to see something come out that just in the road of goodwill and not, you know, unintended consequences, goes completely against the conversation and the discussion and the goals that we outlined with the manager. And I know he's also taking into account, and I don't know, I can't remember, because unfortunately for him, I've had so many conversations with him on various issues, including transportation and the issues that come before, so I can't remember if he said possibly a consultant coming in, looking at, you know, what options under federal standards and state standards that this board might want to consider in the future. So I just want to make sure that that's all blended in together. And then on economic development, which Mr. Diggins has certainly been no stranger to that, that's where I would segue into if we do the two liaison, but if we could still take advantage of the opportunity of perhaps appointing someone. One of the things I would just put forward is, we're, somebody's always going to have issue that we didn't do enough. It just, it's true. You know, you can't do everything, you can't be perfect. But in terms of, and I know we have Ms. Marzilli, who's done a fantastic job on, on so many other issues and on diversity, equity and inclusion, and I know we have that, but I want to make sure, what you all are doing, that we put our best foot forward, and that's public and businesses. And I really would like to see on the committee, and if we avail ourselves of the opportunity, that there's an Arlington resident who is also a business owner, who's in an actual storefront. I know you have two individuals, but it's, it's easier when, and, and the reason I say that is, what that brings is, I think, that individual or individuals or whatever, is in that genre and knows fellow business owners in storefronts, knows the plight of doing day-to-day business here in Arlington. I'm a business owner, and I work out of my home, and that's where my office is. I wouldn't be a good, in my opinion, person to be on this committee, because I really know nothing about storefronts. Is it a landlord issue? Is it a site issue? Is it, they're in, so, so I would just say to my colleagues, if nobody, because it is a big time commitment, because there's more than actual what's put before us, the subcommittee, I think I heard there's going to be up to 12 subcommittees?
Oh, I, I think we'll probably do a subcommittee for each of the seven.
Okay. So seven subcommittees?
Study areas, yes.
I apologize. Somebody from the, so seven, so there would have to be that. I would like to, and especially since, you know, if we have the opportunity, I'd like to appoint someone. We've done that before, believe it or not, when I first came on the scene, every committee that the then Board of Selectmen had, infrastructure- I would like to, and especially since, you know, if we have the opportunity, I'd like to appoint someone, we've done that before, believe it or not, when I first came on the scene, every committee that the then Board of Selectment had, infrastructure, bylaw, recharity, you name it, I was their appointee. So we, it doesn't necessarily have to be one of us. And then just last, whatever outreach, which I know you're going to do through the business community, I hope it's a person, if it's somebody who's added to it, or if what was said to me, tell that person go to a subcommittee meeting, whatever, okay, that can happen, too. But also, whatever we can do outreach to the public, you know, especially around, we have so many identified neighborhood groups with kiosks and the bike path, you know, try to get the information out that way, because so many people are getting their information about town events on the different kiosks, whether it's up at Robbins Farm, the brand-new one that was the Eagle Scout Project up at Great Meadows, that just was put in, I think, August 14th, which is fantastic, you know, so definitely, I know you want to do this, I'm not saying you don't, find a new way to outreach to the business community, as well as continue with the business community. And, Mr. Feeney, did I misspeak on anything that I attributed to you?
Mrs. Mahan, no, you didn't.
That's it, thanks. So if my colleagues would think about, if none of us, I like the one or two liaison people, but I'd still like to take advantage of the opportunity of appointing someone as our designee that isn't one of us, if one of us does not want to do that, which I don't in terms of the appointment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So I think for purposes of tonight's discussion, I mean, I put it out there in terms of what role individual board members would like to have, and I think it's something maybe we come back, and if someone wants to express interest this evening, that's fine. I think, you know, one of the things here is the committee, again, at the end of the day, it's the Redevelopment Board's document and what they're approving. And so what we're, originally the presentation was have a select board member. Now, Mrs. Mahan raises having a select board designee, and if no member of the board is interested in being a full member, I guess we'd make the request back, we'd like to make a designee, how does, and I think there's been some discussions, but it's not technically our call to have the designee, so we ask you, if we don't have a member, there may be an interest on the board to have a select board designee to the, to the committee, and I'm getting ahead of myself, but before I do that, maybe just ask you for a reaction to that as a potential option.
Yeah, it's an interesting idea. I think, you know, really what I'm looking to do is make sure that this body is informed the entire time that we're working in the process. And whether that's through a designee or a member, I think, you know, either probably works. I'm not sure if I need to, you know, run it by the Redevelopment Board or anything like that, I don't, you know, since we voted and it did say a select board member, but I think, I can't imagine that the language in that is so strict that it wouldn't also support an appointee.
Okay. So what I'm thinking, and again, unless there's any member of the board that would like to be a full member, the Advisory Committee, I'm not really seeing that from anybody, I'd almost recommend that I put this on our agenda for the September 9th meeting, maybe we have a discussion between now and then, and then if one or two individuals, and you can mention tonight, or you can get back to me in the meantime, are interested, at least as serving as liaisons, would recommend that you attend the meeting, which I believe would be September 5th, that's the first Thursday in September. So any other questions a comment, Mr. Diggins?
Well, I guess, best process-wise, we, I guess maybe we should ask if they're also interested in having the designee and liaisons, because I thought it's going to be initially liaisons or designee. So I leave it to you, Mr. Chair, as to whether you want to ask the Director that question, but if you're fine with both, I mean.
If we went the liaison route, here's what I'd say, it's a member who would go to meetings, may not go to every meeting, would report back, whereas a designee would be a voting member and would be attending every meeting. So if we did that, I mean, the liaison is almost someone just attending, but that's a fair point, Mr. Diggins, if we did go that route. And again, liaison's understood, a liaison would not be a voting member of the committee.
Sure, sure. I think, yeah, like I said, I'm open to whatever this board thinks is the, you know, best vehicle for getting the information that you need.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so with that, I think we can leave it open until September 9th, individual members can contact me about the liaison. I don't see anybody raising their hand to be a full member, so I am going to put on our next agenda, subject to further discussion with Ms. Rickard after she talks with the, perhaps, members of the Redevelopment Board for a potential designee by the Select Board.
Sure.
Okay. Great. All right, well, thank, oh, actually, I didn't ask, got caught up here, I do have a couple of comments, and just, just going back to the original plan, and Mr. Helmoth had recognized everything that's in here, Mrs. Mahan had talked about it, too, and had mentioned just analyzing everything, but it's really a fascinating document from 2015, just in terms of what was current at that time. There was a goal to implement the CPA. Well, CPA is so, you know, every year, that committee is doing such a, such a great job. And speaking about topical, I see Ms. Anderson, Mr. Benson, we'll be hearing from them shortly, one of the goals in 2015 was to work with Cambridge, Somerville, and the MWRA to eliminate all CSO discharges within the next 20 years, that's 2035. That, I imagine, will still be on the table for the next master plan. There was overnight parking policies changing then, we've had a pilot since then, there's just a lot that has gone on, there's some things we haven't gotten to, and, but it really does test you as a community in terms of, okay, here are your goals, what are you going to do to achieve them, and if you can't, why not? And I think, I think that grid that the Implementation Committee had prepared past year speaks to that a little bit, too.
I'm going to revisit that as soon as I can.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, well, thank you for coming this evening.
All right.
Okay, next, item three is a discussion of the MBTA proposed development of Elwife Station slash CSO issues, Eugene Benson and Kristin Anderson. And I also want to add that I did have a discussion before the meeting with Mrs. Mahan, who was also interested in having this item on the agenda this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Yep. My name is Kristin Anderson. I live at 12 Upland Road West, but I used to live right next to the Elwife Brook. I had floodwater in my home a couple times in the three years that I lived there, and so I am very concerned about the CSOs and the sewage flooding, which has not stopped.
And I'm Eugene Benson, I live at 16 Hillsdale Road, and thank you for putting the MBTA's proposed redevelopment of the Elwife Station area on the agenda for this evening's Select Board meeting. The redevelopment will have a profound impact on Arlington. We think now is the time for the town to engage with the MBTA about the proposal. I'm going to give a very brief overview of the proposal, just some of the highlights. Then Kristin will discuss how the CSOs regularly pollute Elwife Brook and contribute to the Brook flooding and their relation to the area that may be developed. Then I'll discuss next steps, options for you to consider. It's important to emphasize at this point that we don't take a position on whether the MBTA's proposal is good or bad, because it's not fleshed out at all, we really don't know what it is, there's a lot more to learn. Redevelopment at the Elwife Station could be good, or it could be bad, depending on how it's developed and whether it deals with the Elwife CSOs pollution and flooding, and with traffic impacts in the area. So a brief overview of the proposal. MBTA has started a procurement process to get a private sector joint development partner for the redevelopment of not only the garage, but all the property that they own there. So it's the Redline Station, 2,733 space parking garage, commuter rail right-of-way, and ancillary layover, and maintenance facility land. The T believes that the property offers a tremendous redevelopment opportunity, and they want a piece of that opportunity. It envisions that the existing parking garage will be demolished, and a mixed-use development that includes a new parking garage taking its place. It also envisions other parts of the area being developed for residential and commercial uses, with a possible station for the Fitchburg Commuter Rail also. The MBTA's plan is to enter into a pre-development agreement with its chosen development partner and create a master plan. And once the preconditions are met, it's to proceed directly with a long-term lease for the developer. So they're on a pretty fast track for this. The T has written in its documents that it expects the development of the Elwife Complex to be closely coordinated with the City of Cambridge, as you might imagine. But there's no mention of the town of Arlington, we board of the property, in any of the T information. They anticipate that they'll have a multidisciplinary plan, personnel put together, and they will look at the plans submitted by the developer. They say it's possible that they'll form a small group of external stakeholders to add transparency to and ensure support of the process, but there's no discussion of the composition of the internal, external stakeholder group, or how it will be chosen. Potential impacts on Arlington are tremendous. Potential for very increased flows to the CSOs, because you're talking about a great development, lots of residents, commercial, in an area with combined sewers. Increased flows means increased pollution of Elwife Brook, and more flooding of the Brook over into Arlington, into the DC land, and in really big storms, potentially back into people's backyards and homes. If they don't do this right, there will be missed opportunities, and we'll get into that, to actually eliminate or reduce significantly the CSOs. For example, once they tear down the garage, it's a great place to put storage, sewage storage, under the garage. And while most of what the MWRA has done, and the communities have done, is for sewer separation, they have done some sewage storage, which in many cases is much less expensive. And in fact, Milwaukee has pretty much solved its CSO problem with storage rather than sewage separation. So tearing down the garage makes a great opportunity for that. There's going to be a traffic increase, what will they do about that? How will it affect Arlingtonians going through that area? There will probably be nice work and shopping opportunities, maybe some people who live in Arlington will end up working nearby. And there's the possibility of commuter rail station with two stops into North Station. So it has both pros and cons, but if they don't do it the right way, I think Arlington will suffer. Now, Kristin's going to talk about the CSO.
Yeah, and I may have forgotten to mention that we're from Save the Elwife Brook, and David Stock is here tonight, too, he is also from Save the Elwife Brook. So last year, actually, let's start with yesterday. Yesterday, we had some rain and sewage was dumped into the Brook at the MBTA Station Parking Garage CSO, just a few feet away from that circular structure. And last year, 27 million gallons of untreated sewage was dumped into Elwife Brook, 27 million gallons. In 2021, 51 million gallons of untreated sewage was dumped into the Brook. This is a densely populated area with 5,000 people living in the Elwife's 100-year floodplain. There are multiple environmental justice neighborhoods along the Brook. Last year, the Brook flooded over its bank at least five times, sending untreated sewage floodwater into the DCR State Park and into the Elwife Greenway. We saw children riding bikes through untreated sewage floodwater, we saw joggers running through it, and we saw parents pushing baby strollers through untreated sewage floodwater. The situation is so bad, it is absolutely horrifying. People shouldn't have to be exposed to sewage when they are trying to get to the T. They shouldn't have untreated sewage in their parks, yards, and homes. Climate change with its wetter and more furious storms threatens to exacerbate the problem, making it two to four times as bad in the Elwife as it is now in just a couple decades, unless we see improvements. Several months ago, Save the Elwife Brook, along with the Mystic River Watershed Association, called for an end to new sewer hookups to the Elwife CSOs until the problem is solved. Since then, the Commonwealth is considering citing a new development just feet away from Cambridge's worst CSO, which is known as CAM 401A. Last year, this one CSO discharged over 20 million gallons of untreated sewage pollution. The 2023 discharge from this one CSO, CAM 401A, significantly exceeded the permitted annual total for all of the Elwife Brook CSOs, which is 7.3 million gallons annually. Note that this CSO is just feet away from the MBTA's circular parking garage. Save the Elwife Brook shot footage of that area under sewage floodwater late last year. The next closest CSO to the MBTA parking garage is only a few hundred feet away, it is known as MWR 003. That CSO belongs to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority. MWRA dumped over a million gallons of untreated sewage from that CSO last year. And it's important to understand that MWRA reconstructed this CSO in 2015, making it larger, so that it now discharges greater volumes of untreated sewage than it had before. This CSO functions as cheap hydraulic relief for the Commonwealth's downstream sewer system. The regional sewer system has systemic problems and is unable to provide adequate capacity during storm events. And when you start looking at these development plans in as rough a stage as it is now, as early a stage as it is now, the first thing that you may notice is that the Elwife Brook branch sewer runs right through that MBTA property. They will not be able to ignore the sewer system, the Elwife Sewer System will be part of the MBTA's construction plan. So where will sewage from new buildings at Elwife Station end up? It will end up in the yards, parks, and homes of Arlington residents, unless there is an end to new sewer hookups pending a solution. This is not an insurmountable problem, it takes money, and we are at a critical point right now where there exists a possibility for an investment. Cambridge, Somerville, and MWRA are in the planning stages of a new plan to address the Elwife CSOs. But they need to deliver a comprehensive plan that calls for a virtual end to CSOs or a treatment facility for the Elwife. We have not yet seen a plan that includes complete or virtual elimination of untreated sewage pollution. And you may recall that we've already been at this, going to meetings with Somerville, Cambridge, and MWRA for a couple of years now. We have not seen a plan that calls for an end to this problem. So as an immediate measure, we are asking to limit increases of sewage flows by prohibiting new hookups to the CSOs. It is because of the deleterious impacts of untreated sewage flooding in the neighborhoods of multiple environmental justice populations along the Brook, that we must prevent further increases in sewage flows until a real solution is in planning. And thank you so much for having us here tonight, we really appreciate it, and we ask that you please support an end to untreated sewage pollution in East Arlington.
So now I want to talk a little bit about what we think the Select Board might do.
Okay, yeah, if I could ask, I don't know how long, how much longer you have here, but that'd be great.
Yeah, I will wrap it up by saying, it's clear that the town is a stakeholder in the development, but it's not clear to the T that the town is a stakeholder in development. If Elwife were any closer to Arlington, it would be in Arlington. The Elwife Brook flooding and pollution is in Arlington. Arlington residents use, according to a 2007 study, the Elwife Garage more than any other community's residence except for Lexington. Potential commuter rail station, traffic impacts, and as I said, it could be good or bad for the town, depending on how it's developed. And if they develop it ignoring the CSOs, it's going to be bad. And we just had a chance today to look at the documents that they showed in their initial presentation to potential developers, CSOs were not mentioned once at all, sewage was not mentioned once at all. So what can the Select Board do? Here are our suggestions. A letter to the Chair of the MBTA Board of Directors and the MBTA A letter to the Chair of the MBTA Board of Directors and the MBTA General Manager expressing the concerns that we've talked about, about the CSOs, the flooding, traffic, and that there are opportunities for fixing those as part of the project. Ask for a stakeholder group now. That includes Arlington. Ask for a meeting. A letter to the Governor, the Secretary of Transportation, State Senator Friedman, and State Representatives Rogers and Garbely along the same lines. What the Governor should do, and I think this would need to go in a letter, is asking her to convene the state agencies and authorities necessary to work on this together, because we don't see that happening. That's the T, the MWRA, DCR, which owns the parkland, DEP, which is going to have to permit some of this, and to make sure that Arlington is part of what's going on also. Because without that coordination, to use a terrible metaphor, the T is just going to run this train down the track, right, without concern with anything other than the Federal Transportation Authority, which they said they need to talk to because they funded part of Elwaye. And the last, our suggestion is, appoint a small town committee that includes one person or liaison, I should add, from the Select Board. Someone from Save the Elwaye Brook, someone from the Track of Advisory Committee, someone from Planning and perhaps the Town Manager or his designee, to work on this for the town, to interact with all those people. Our fear is if you just make an occasional touch, nothing will happen. You know, we will have to be proactive throughout this entire process to try to get a good outcome. So thank you for your attention, and we are interested in what you might want to do.
Thank you for the presentation and for your continued work. One thing I will mention, Ms. Anderson mentioned, the outfall, the overflow that occurred at Camp 401A, and this is the first time, I think, we've actually been within the period. We're within the 48-hour period that the overflow occurred. It occurred, and people remember, yesterday morning it rained, so between 7:52 AM and 8:18, there was an overflow, and the estimate is about 890,000 gallons of sewage entered into the Brook. I think that's the right number. And Cambridge and Somerville are obligated to issue alerts when that happens, so that will run until tomorrow morning, that 48-hour period. And as part of that warning, there's a required public health warning. And I'm just going to read from it because, again, it just shows you, first of all, it identifies potentially affected areas as Arlington, Cambridge, Somerville, and Medford. The required public health warning is, avoid contact with these water bodies, which includes Elwaye Brook, for 48 hours after the discharge or overflow ceases due to increased health risks from bacteria and other pollutants. And then you refer to a website. So that's, it wasn't a real big rain event yesterday morning, but you can see that that triggered the overflow. So with that, I will turn to Board members for any questions or comments. Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Mr. Benson and Ms. Anderson. Mr. Stoff, who? We've been at it for 20 years? Maybe even longer. One of the points that Mr. Benson touched on that I think we need to really define and hopefully have a role in, and we've all had conversations with the Town Manager and others about this, plus we also have a parallel time clock clicking of the NPT's variance issuance from DEP of August 31st. So I'll leave it to Attorney Cunningham if, as we go down the road, any of this, you know, ties into what that decision is and if there's any action from that, which is a whole 'nother agenda item for another night. What I would like to do, certainly would like to send the two letters that Mr. Benson, or one of the two, you know, see what my colleagues think about, that he suggested, but definitely want to do some follow-up, which I certainly will commit to. One of the things I'm very concerned about is, and I started to have informal conversations with senators and representatives, not just from Arlington, for possibly calling in a favor or something in the sense of, I would like Arlington to have some sort of seat on the External Stakeholders Committee entity that gets formed. First, we have to find out what that is and what that means. And I wouldn't be surprised, as we would guess from Mr. Benson, that Arlington hasn't been considered in there, but we certainly do with the CSO issue, as well as we need to be in there in terms of the parking traffic impact, that when the Elwaye is closed down and shuttered and whatever development, that's going to be at least a year, if not two years. And we can kind of bury our heads in the sand and say, oh, either people won't come to park there, or if they do, we'll give them a $15 ticket. Well, no, we need to be involved in that, because, you know, that needs to be addressed and strategized for that. So what I would like to do is send one or two of, or both of the letters, do follow-up, which I certainly would commit to. What I am hoping is that if we can get, I would love ideally, and I know it's a high ask, the General Manager, Philip Eng, and/or Ian, someone that comes with him, or someone that he deems appropriate, to at the very least meet with the Town Manager, Mr. Feeney, you know, perhaps Attorney Cunningham, whomever, doesn't have to be me or any other politicians in the room, to have the discussion to say, we want to talk about the External Stakeholders Committee that is being formed, entity. We want to make sure Arlington has a part in that. Arlington's concern would be threefold around environmental issues, CSO, around transportation, parking, when Elwaye comes down and something is being built, as well as representing, definitely Arlington, for the individuals who are identified, living, abutting the Elwaye in environmental justice communities, as well as downstream in Somerville. There's a lot of people, when we've all zoomed in at different times to the meetings with Cambridge, with Somerville, MWRA, it's not just in Arlington, it's coming in to our homes. And I remember somebody said, if my toilet broke, and I said, and I abutted the Elwaye, I'm pretty sure the individual was from Somerville, and I decided to take what comes out of my toilet, or gets put in and needs to come out and throw off the window into the Elwaye, I would be fined right away. And if I said to the state, well, as MWRA is saying, it's not worth the money to spend, you wouldn't make a dent. And if I said, well, I don't have the money to fix my toilet, guess what? You can't say that. You got to fix it. So I would like to send one, if not both, of those letters, but I also would like to do everything we can, and I know Mr. Diggins is our, we spoke very briefly before the meeting about this, our representative with the MBTA Advisory Committee. So going forward, I'm not asking from tonight, any suggestions that he might have to this endeavor, but I agree Arlington really needs to, I mean, ideally, I would say, no more CSO connections, as well as some part of the project actually addresses some sort of green stormwater wastewater solution, so. But I think the number one goal before us is making sure, at the very least, our Town Manager has a seat at whatever the External Stakeholders Committee that will be discussing this, whether it's RFP or moving forward when the construction actually takes place. And I think the way we arrange any kind of a meeting, I don't want to say, oh, we're going to go for the Secretary of Transportation, she's a very competent individual, but that's just shooting way too high. But certainly work on getting, I'd love to be able to get the General Manager, but if not, somebody close in that echelon to that. And I certainly would commit to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Any else? Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, just a few questions and then a comment or two. Interestingly, when I first heard about this, I was going to send both of your email to say, what do you think, do you think we could get a treatment plan out of this? And here, and then you mentioned this notion of sewage storage, I mean, so that is a lot less expensive, and you think that would, that would allow the T to perhaps do, or the developer to do a big project there?
Well, I think there are two things. One is, it depends how big the tank is.
Yeah.
And where exactly it can be located. And I think a point to make about this is, this is really an opportunity to leverage the end of the CSOs. While they're doing all this work, storage tank there, maybe a storage tank somewhere else, maybe some more sewage, sewer separation. It would be nice if they put in a second constructed wetland, because that whole area was once a wetland. A second constructed wetland would give you more opportunity to do sewage separation and send the stormwater there and the sewage to MWA, because as Ms. Anderson mentioned, they're way over capacity whenever there's a large storm. So you need to get more and more water out. So a second wetland, which they can build, because it used to be a wetland, would be a good idea, too. I don't see any of that in there. So it's a major, the other thing to think about, too, is this is going to be a large increase in Cambridge's tax revenues. They could use those tax revenues to separate a lot more of the sewers. And, you know, they could do it ahead of time with tax anticipation bonds. There are a lot of ways that they can do it, but I don't see that on anybody's agenda except our agenda at this point. So sewer separation, and there's going to be tax money coming in for that, storage, it could either end them or end the CSOs, or make a huge dent in at least the MWR 003 and all the Cambridge ones. Probably won't deal with the Somerville one.
All right.
It's a little far away, but if we could get the other ones done, that would be a tremendous victory.
All right. You know, so are you in contact with any Cambridge folks who are working on this issue? Because my understanding is that it's not simply Arlington. Who cares about this issue? That there are residents in Cambridge, I mean.
Yeah, we have Cambridge and Somerville activists who are allies of ours. So, you know, the Elwaye Study Group, Green Cambridge, we're pretty close with Green Cambridge. So, yeah, and Somerville, Green, Open Streets.
What about Mystic River Watershed, Charles River Watershed?
We meet with, yeah, thank you. We meet with them, we meet with them every single month with, at a CSO advocacy group and meeting. We actually met with them last week, and we asked them, have you heard about this MBTA development? And they all said no. So it's, yeah, now's the time to get in on it, I think.
Yeah, definitely. So a couple more questions, short ones, I mean. Is the Conservation Law Foundation involved in this?
We had our first meeting with a lawyer from the Conservation Law Foundation with three, three weeks ago. So we finally have gotten their interest. But that was before we learned about the MBTA proposal, so we need to go back to them and bring them up to speed on that and have another meeting with them. And we're hoping that they may be willing to do something when we get the decision from DEP on the potential water quality variance, but they have made no commitments to us at this point.
They do seem interested, though. They took a two-and-a-half-hour tour of the Brook and sat down and talked about the issues.
Good, 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 good. You know, well, I mean, I'll certainly talk to the Executive Director at the MBTA Advisory Board and let him know about this and our concerns, I mean, and give me some advice, me, Brian Kane, Mr. Feeney, you know, as to how to maybe reach out to people in the T that would listen, you know, be it the General Manager or somebody else, you know. And I also know that the T kind of wants to create an access point, I mean, in, at Elwaye, I mean, for doing repairs right now. They can only access the track, you know, at Kendall, which is what causes, you know, a lot of issues when we try to do track repair. I know they like to do that. And I forget who recently I heard this, it's like, when you're trying to negotiate with someone about something, sometimes if you add more to the pot, you can get buy-in, you know. So it's like, you say, you want to develop? Well, you know what? If you do this, you can develop even more, you know. So that's just it. I'll stop there. But I'm in favor, you know, of, you know, a letter, you know, to our, well, to whomever you prefer. I mean, I think both would be fine, you know, and certainly you can work it from some other angles, you know. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. And either, okay.
So could I make that as a motion? I didn't say that. I'd like to make a motion to send the two letters suggested.
Sure. Okay, so we have a motion.
To send the letter to the General Manager, Philip Eng, and maybe it can just be one letter, and CC Governor Mara Healy, and I, along with others, but I definitely would work with the manager, Town Council, and our Deputy Town Council to come up with a draft letter to be distributed to the rest of the Board for final approval.
Before, hang on one second, Mr. Benson. So we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
A second.
Okay. A motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Actually, I wanted to make a couple of comments in there. So as for the letter, I certainly could support a letter regarding the CSOs. I think that the whole external stakeholder, as I read the MBTA description in the process section of what they, what's attached to our agenda, that feels to me more like, okay, external stakeholders who are going to review proposals and it adds transparency, it's almost further down, but I see the immediate issue with the CSOs, and clearly from the alert that was issued yesterday, you see this is an issue, we all know it's an issue, that affects Arlington. And I certainly can support raising that as a major concern. I think some of the other points that Mr. Benson raised, I feel it's a little premature to be going down the road on the external stakeholder. I would like a copy of the suggestions, and we can talk about this further, but I think in the short term, we've got a motion and a second for the letter regarding the CSOs. I think traffic down the road, we certainly want Mr. Feeney to have the ability, if this ever does get redeveloped, to learn what's the timing, because there's a clear impact on Arlington if the Elwaye Garage closes in terms of impact on the neighborhood. But when I received the request, I viewed this in the short term as really strictly a CSO issue and a real need to get on the record on that. So I could support that type of letter for sure. And I don't know if that, if there's any further comment based on what I said, but...
No, I'll definitely focus on that. My big thing is I want to make sure, which I don't see it in there, that in the RFP to developers who are going to come back with their proposals, that they have to take into consideration mediation, mitigation, whatever shun word.
Sure.
That should be there, the CSO issue.
Yeah.
That, I don't see it in there right now.
Okay. Yeah, and I think it's a good point, like, looking down the road, right, potentially Cambridge is more revenue, I think that's real early to be talking, start thinking about talking to Cambridge about what they're going to do with potential revenue for a site they don't even control, and we don't know what the MBTA is going to do. The last thing I would say is, we've talked about reaching out to the state delegation, and we've talked about the CSO several times on the Board since, in the past five or six years. I still think there should be some notification to the federal delegation, too, because after all, this was the Clean Water Act that started, the cleanup of Boston Harbor is what has led to this issue. And I think for Cambridge and Somerville, it may not, there's a will, there's just not resources. And so, you know, there may be a need for more attention from the federal government, potentially federal resources, but I think any opportunity we have to include our federal delegation in something this big and this important and with the public health need is, it just makes sense, because I think that's really a source of further resources for this problem. So I, you would put your hand up, Mr. Benson. I don't know if we're long past what you were going to respond to earlier, but...
The only thing I would suggest is that the Governor deserves a separate letter, because that letter is the one that says, you need to get the T and MWA and DCR and DEP working together to solve this problem now that it's happening. So it's a letter, at least, I mean, you don't have to do this, obviously, but it's laying out the same problem statement, but then saying, you know, one thing you can do, Governor, is pull all of your agencies and authorities that need to be part of this together.
Yeah, okay. And that's what you were, yeah. Okay, so, and just to clarify for everybody, so the motion is, I think, for Mr. Feeney, maybe, are you offering to work with him to bring something back to the Board at our next meeting to vote on?
Within the next few days, my goal would be, will be by Friday, that I get the draft of two letters to Mr. Feeney, for him to share with Attorney Cunningham, Cunningham, whoever else, clean it up a little bit, then get it to the Board in its electronic packet as a draft. And go forward with, to see if we want to vote, one, both, none, or something else. But I'll definitely commit to coming up with a verbiage.
Okay, all right. So that's the motion. It's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. So thank you for the presentation and for your continued advocacy.
Thank you.
So it's a light night here at this board, a quiet August night. Item four is the Back to School Bash and Zara Khanjan. I don't know if I have that pronunciation correct. I don't know if Zara is available through Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, so she can be promoted. I believe we've had a similar request, different, and in the school.
Hello?
Hello? Good evening. Yeah, first, if you could...
Hello, dear board members. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
If I could just interrupt you for just one second. If you could just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the request. And if we have any questions, we'll get back to you on that.
Sounds good. I'm Zara Khanjan. I'm the principal of Russian School of Mathematics in Arlington. And our request is we submitted the application for the special event that we're going to organize our back-to-school bash as we are celebrating the beginning of the school year. And we are applying, we submitted the application for Wintermore Park on September 28 from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So that's, the event will be for two hours. We will need some time before to prepare and a little bit more time to finish the event. So I would say from 10:00 AM maybe to 2:00 PM. And the plan is we will be representing our school there, having some entertainment for the kids, some stations with math problems and some fun activities with them. And we're going to involve other businesses from Arlington community which are connected to kids' activities like craft, arts and crafts, music, ceramica, mosaic, something like that. We are waiting for your approval with that time and day to be able to reach out to these businesses as well.
Thank you. Turn to the board for questions, comments, motions above approval.
Second.
Mr. Heluth? Any questions? Okay, on a motion by Mr. Heluth, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's it. It was a quick one. All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
Yes, thank you so much. Come join us on September 28.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring the kids.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. I'm just going to read the headings on each one. Item five is a request for a contracted drain layer license. There are four different companies requesting that. Item six is an acceptance of funds for the 2024 battle reenactment. Item seven is a Jason Russell House Arlington Historical Society Beer Garden Special One-Day Beer License Amendments. The First Amendment is to change the time for the remainder of the season. It was 1:00 to 6:00. The request is to change it to 1:30 to 6:30, 1:30 PM to 6:30 PM. And a request for Arlington Town Day, serving time from 12:00 to 6:30, 12:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Item eight is a request for a special one-day beer and wine license on September 8 at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event. Item nine is free parking in the Russell Common Lot and Railroad Lot for Arlington Town Day on September 21, 2024. Item 10 is a request for temporary no parking signs on Bartlet Ave on September 21, 2024. Item 11 is a special, request for a special event, National Coffee with a Cup Day, October 2, 2024. Start.
I'd like to move approval and just highlight item number six, which is the contribution by a local business leader bank to the 2024 battle reenactment that we had back in April. It was a very generous contribution and really allowed us to create the programming that we had that was very, very successful, which will roll into the 2025 battle reenact- you know. It's more than just a battle reenactment, a 2025 celebration. And so it was really very generous by the bank to allow that to happen, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mahan.
Just one comment.
Certainly.
And I also know that, I had a conversation with Ms. Feeney, who also, because I saw that in the governor's budget, there was money designated for the 250th celebration. Ms. Feeney informs me that he, as well as the committee, have already prepared either a grant or grants, grant request to that particular fund. I'm blanking, I don't want to say the number that I think that it is because I'm going by memory, but it's a pretty sizable amount. So I just wanted to double-check. I know what Ms. Feeney tells me is the truth, but the committee is also either submitting on its own or with the manager a request for that, grant for that money.
I don't want to say it out loud because then we jinx it.
All right, so I'm not going to say anything of what I think it is. But thank you for doing that. Okay, I'll set second.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, so a motion for approval of the consent agenda by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. Moving on, we have a series of appointments. We will start with item number 12 for the Council on Aging. Elaine McNulty Knight is, I don't know if, is available through Zoom?
What'd she say? I didn't understand.
She's saying raise her hand.
Oh, or she could raise her hand.
Yeah, if she could raise her hand. I don't see her in there.
And I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, that voice you hear is Ms. Meyer, our board administrator, who is participating remotely this evening. Okay, we're just going to check to see if she's available.
They were sitting.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought I saw them both earlier.
I lost hope.
Hopefully, we didn't scare them away with our two agenda items in an hour and 20 minutes.
Okay, all right, so...
Do you want to table it and come back in case?
Why don't we move on and we'll see if, even if they can participate through Zoom. Item, well, I'll go to item 13, the LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission, Sarah Goodrich. Is Goodrich available?
She'll be joining here too.
Okay.
Is someone letting you in?
I think, yeah, is she being promoted now?
Yep, she's in. You know, I'm not sure why we're not seeing her. I mean, I can see her, you know.
I'm here, hello?
Oh, hi. Thank you for joining this evening. If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in joining the Rainbow Commission.
Sure, so I'm Sarah Goodrich. I live, I live here in Arlington. I've lived here for about 15 years, a little over 15 years. And I have two children in the elementary schools. My wife and I have been to many of the Rainbow, the Rainbow Commission's activities. Our kids participate, and we really like what is being done. And so when an opportunity became available to join the commission, I stepped up and volunteered. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll continue to do good work.
Thank you for your interest in serving. I will turn to board members. Mr. Diggins.
I was pointing to Mr. Heluth, because I was going to go up first, so...
Okay, whoever would like to go first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move approval. I would like to thank Sarah for stepping up. That is what makes Arlington such a great place to live, is that we have so many volunteers who are willing to pitch in. I enjoyed reading, reviewing your resume very much and your comments just now. We are delighted that your family is part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heluth. Mr. Diggins?
And I'll second it. And I've seen Sarah, you know, in action already at a commission meeting, you know, great attitude, you know, very straightforward. And if anything, I remember no frozen corn syrup on a stick. I'll do frozen hookeys, but no frozen corn syrup on a stick, you know, so thank you for joining.
In reference to the ice cream truck.
So on a motion by Mr. Heluth, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations and thank you again for your interest in serving.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 14, Constable Jeffrey Silton for a term to expire January 31, 2027. Is Mr. Silton, checking to see if he's available through Zoom?
He should be connecting.
Yeah, I'm on right now.
Yes, yep, good evening, Mr. Silton.
How are you? I guess my video isn't coming through.
Yeah, we can hear you, but we don't see you on the video. But if you're having a video problem, the audio is fine. You're coming in loud and clear.
Okay.
Yeah, and so again, if you, we have your application, I believe, I think we heard from Ms. Feeney on this, but if you could, I believe you're a constable in another jurisdiction and you're applying for that appointment in Arlington, is that correct?
Correct. I'm a Newton resident. I've been a Newton constable for 27 years. I'll be approved for my 10th time this fall. I'm also a Watertown constable for eight years. I'm also a constable for the town of Wellesley for two years now.
Okay, great. And this is, and we have the memo from Ms. Feeney requesting the board's appointment of his appointment of Mr. Silton. So I'll turn to the board now. Mr. Hurd?
Move approval. As someone that uses constables from time to time, it's good to see a more robust list than we had a few years ago, which I think was zero. But maybe we'll get to work together, but happy that you chose to serve in Arlington.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, on a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, board. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you for your patience. Okay, so I feel badly about our constable on aging appointment because they were, they were here. And why don't we go on and see if they become available? I may suggest maybe a little different procedure, given the fact that they actually showed up tonight. But we'll continue on for now. Item 15 for approval, Wine and Malt Alcohol License, Grad Group Inc. for 352A Massachusetts Avenue. I believe the applicant may be joining us remotely. Did we see them in the waiting room or...
Yes, they should be connecting. It's just looks like it's taking them a couple minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
You got the hard copy? No, this one, this one seems to be... It's like, that's, no misty mail, it's August 16th, huh?
If you would just like to introduce yourself?
We just have, we have an issue with Zoom right now. We don't, I think the applicant has been promoted through Zoom, but if you're there, if you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the application?
Okay.
Oh, great.
Hi, my name is, okay, do you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, good. Because I'm a little bit, you know, the difficulty, too heavy. Okay, so my name is Vishnu the Body. I have a business here in Arlington. It's called Macalo Nepaliyan Indian Cuisine, 352 Sweet A Mass Avenue, Arlington. So I applied for Malchon Beer, so wine and beer application for my business.
Okay. And we see the application, we see the inspection reports that were made part of the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to board members for any questions or comments?
Not really, just wondering about, you know, the, sorry, I think I'm in the middle, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, we, yeah, we have everything here. I'm actually asking board members if they have any questions for you or any motions. And I'll turn to Mr. Hurd. Move approval. Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
I'll second, subject to the conditions, and I know that Mr., oh, I can't see his name, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, let me get your name so I say it correctly. Mr. Dabadi, that you have copies of letters from...
Vishnu the Body.
Yes, so you have the copies of the letters. So I'm seconding the motion to approve, but there are some conditions that our approval are saying yes, that you have to do regarding, I think it's the Planning Department and Fire Department, so. So we're approving yes, Mr. Hurd is making the motion, and I'm seconding it. And you just have to, I know you have the letters, just go through them and make sure all those conditions are taken care of, and then you're all set to, and you'll have the approval for the license for beer and wine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
Okay, that's on the phone, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Any other, all right, so a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, subject to all conditions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, best of luck with the business. We had a little trouble with the, with the audio, but we just approved the application. So best of luck. Okay. Sometimes we have issues through Zoom and I think, I think everybody, we could hear each other by the end of it. Okay, item 16 for approval, Common Vic Cheerleaders License, Fiesta Bites Pizzeria LLC, 1323 Massachusetts Avenue. I believe the applicant again is joining us through Zoom. Okay, Ms. Meyer, it is, I don't know if, are they, are you promoting? Okay, you're promoting.
It's like they're having trouble connecting.
Okay.
You won't see until he speaks.
Right. Oh, because it's differently configured because, oh, okay, all right, all right, now I get it. Okay, so because Ms. Meyer is remote, we won't see everybody remotely until they start speaking.
Until they start speaking, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, oh, great, okay. Yeah, if you could ju, oh, good, yeah, good evening. Yeah, if you could just tell us a little bit about your application and the new business that you would like approval for up at, up in the Heights.
Yes, so my...
We just lost you. Did you just mute yourself? No, no, we can hear you now.
Okay, so my name is Azel Sanchez Hernandez, and I'm the new owner of the old Boston Bits and Gido, and we look forward to making new impression for this old business that has been in a lot of... has been in a lot of ups and downs for the last few years.
Great, thank you. And we have the inspection reports that we received from the various departments, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to board members for any motions or questions. Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir, for your interest in doing business in Arlington. I wanted to ask you, I know that you've reviewed the paperwork, but I particularly wanted to point out the, the comments by our economic development coordinator regarding the existing signs on the building are not in compliance with our zoning bylaw. Are you aware of that and do you agree to make, bring those signs into compliance before you open?
That's what we're working on with the sign company that we have, and we're also talking to the sign, to the, I forgot her name, Katie, I believe, because it's not a way to remove the signs for now, or whatever we have to do, we're willing to adjust it so we can be able to operate.
Good. And thank you, sir, I wanted to ask the town manager if that seemed like a reasonable response in course of action, because that, that was a, one of the thornier issues we had in that location, among many others, as Mr. Hernandez suggested.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes, Mr. Helmoth, the applicant is actively engaged in discussions with both the planning department and inspectional services and has applied for a signed permit to ensure that the new location will finally be compliant with the town's zoning bylaw for signage.
Excellent, good, good. Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for, for your awareness of that, and I'm happy to move approval, subject to all conditions from all reporting agencies that are before us.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Mr. Hurd?
I'll second that, and just to briefly follow Mr. Helmoth's comment, that is not just specific to this business location, but it's good that you're working with the town to make the property comply with the sign policy, and we'll take your word that you will keep the property in compliance, because a lot of businesses in order to open, they have to be compliant with the sign policies, but up and down Mass Ave, solely but surely, a lot of businesses, even ones that have sat in this room and promised us to comply, go, come out of compliance. So, you know, we, we don't have the infrastructure to, you know, send somebody up and down Mass Ave every day to, to police that, so we just ask you as a business that's coming in to town to just be respectful of the bylaws that we have in place.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mrs. Mahan?
And just two quick questions, one to the applicant, first, welcome. I look forward to you being able to open, and we all know how difficult it is to have a business, especially a restaurant business, and the commitment that's needed for that, as well as all the steps you need to take. And I take from your remarks, you're also aware of the items highlighted by the fire department, and you're working with them. Previously, the fire department couldn't get inside this business and had to sort of do it from outside, looking through the window. But am I right that you were also working with the fire department on the conditions in that letter?
Yes, absolutely. We have made arrangements as a fire pool stations and also the door in the back, I think it was a problem with the landing or stuff like that. So the owner of the building, he has made the arrangements for the back door, and it's one of the million dollar questions that I have, if we have to relocate the exit sign and other stuff, but I'm assuming we have to talk to the fire department to see what we're going to do about this, to make everything the right way. We want, definitely, we want to start with the right foot, and I would love to do whatever I have to do on my hands to commit your expectations as a town, and also as a new member of your community.
Okay, and if you can just help coordinate, arrange, so that the representative from the fire department through, with you and the owner or with the owner can get into the business so that, because they can't do the inspection from the street. And I just have a question for either the chair or through the chair or the town manager, just because it was an issue with the previous business. The Board of Health, may, I don't know if it's because it's printed out, but I don't have a report here, is, it may just be missing, so I'm assuming Board of Health is aware, they've made comments, and as part of this motion, it's also subject to any conditions that they might have imposed, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Ms. Feeny?
That is correct, Mrs. Mahan. The applicant is in touch with the Board of Health, they are undergoing the typical plan review process. Unfortunately, we were unable to get the written inspection report from the Health Department to the select board in time for posting of the meeting materials, but in conversation I learned that the condition was going to be what you would standard, what you would see under standard conditions, and the written inspection report would be available later this week.
Okay, and if we could definitely get a copy of that, only because not this current business proposal or individual, but previous circumstance that we dealt with. I know people came up to me and asked why, you know, I always say I read everything and I'm on top of everything, why concerning the Board of Health aspect, as well as, you know, I understand planning department and signage, so when I didn't see it in here. So I definitely, as the rest of the board, want to see that, and please to the applicant, I'm only asking this question, it's not because of your application, but because of the previous proprietor, who unfortunately, we both had, had a very bumpy road, but now it's a new day, a new page.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Sanchez Hernandez is working with all our town departments, has indicated that. We'll see the report from the Board of Health later on in the week from the town manager or chair, because I definitely want to be able to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
And I'm assuming somebody's seconding this, yeah.
And we'll incorporate that into, yeah. So, and I want to wish you the best of luck, Katie, we'll have the motion first, though, on a motion by Mr. Helmoth, seconded by Mr. Hurd, subject to all conditions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved, and we wish you the best of luck and with the site, and we can really feel your enthusiasm for turning things around up there, so, so good luck.
Thank you very much, and you guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made denied at the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Is anybody in the chambers who wishes to be heard in open forum? Come, come on up.
My name is Cathy Corbett, I live at 17 Mill Street, Millbrook Square Apartments. It's nice to see you in person instead of on my small TV. Three minutes, okay. As part of the high school and town decisions, but I think the high school and traffic congestion, although there always has been, it's at the end of my driveway, 17 Mill Street, which is a long driveway to the entrance to the building, and also includes handicap parking spots, which I have one of. I'm sorry, I've injured my back and I have to sit up. I, after going through three and a half years conservative estimate of loud construction right outside my window, that coincided with me having serious illness and needing to rest, but also needing to get out and come back to my parking space to where someone, I would go to her house and she would take me to treatments, and I thought, oh, at last, I wasn't hearing construction trucks between High Rock and then the high school, I thought we were done. But I walked out one day and there are now signal lights, full overhead signal lights as in intersection, which we aren't quite, because my driveway is like this and Millbrook Lane is like this, which is the road that is the entrance to the high school. I was told by the principal last week, who I just happened to go and ask if someone could talk, that that's going to be the permanent entrance to the high school. There seems to be some question about that. I asked our manager of the apartment complex, it's senior housing and disabled, and HUD, privately owned, but HUD subsidized. I asked the manager of our apartment building to look into it, and she actually spoke with someone who said they were the supervisor down on the site on, on Mill Street, where there were now not just the hanging intersection lights, but the lower street lights, I don't know how else to put it, and then pedestrian lights. And the point is that this is at the end of the driveway that I need to come in and out of. It's stressful for me because, and it's all done, and I know there may be nothing to do about it, but it's stressful for me because I do have multiple medical appointments, I try to be early, take as much time as possible, et cetera, and also because it's a driveway. And there are other complications that I don't have time in this forum to tell you that make it narrow, many, other than people who park there, construction trucks, landscaping trucks, people bringing their elderly parents, groceries, et cetera, and it makes it so that there's not always, it's wider than a normal driveway, but it's not always a, you're not always, it's not a two-lane driveway. There are a number of signal lights, 10, the last I counted, you know, some of them, the four-light configuration, et cetera, and then since the street doesn't, across the street doesn't quite up, I'm sorry, I'm tired, it's nice to see you.
And I'm sorry for the hour, I actually, you had left a message for me at my home today.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem, I got it when I came home at the end of the day, but what I'd be willing to do is follow up with you directly, and maybe we can get you some further answers, and I can hear some more of your concerns, because we're, unfortunately, this is a short time period for open forum.
I'm almost done.
Okay, go right ahead, but I, I'll still follow up with you and try to get you some additional information and maybe coordinate something to further address your concerns.
My understanding is the light is short time for our driveway. There are the lights for the Mill Street, two parts of Mill Street plus the other street. There still is a crosswalk that doesn't line up with these things. I am just concerned that it's not solved, the problem that it may have been constructed floor, and that it may be more of difficulty for people like myself, there are others that have expressed concern also. I should have timed this at home. There are many, there are other details.
Okay. Yeah, and?
The principal also said he sent out, he sent out way back notices to the abutters, which apparently we are across the street, and I never received, nor did anybody I know in our building, nor did the manager. I would, the point is, we are elders, I have worked all my life helping, I don't usually say this, but I've worked all my life helping, as a social worker, mental health counselor, people in different communities, and different populations, children and families and elders. And I sometimes think we become invisible, especially if we are older and poor and don't have a lot of power. It is hard for people like myself even, but harder for a lot of people to come and speak to the board, so I appreciate your time.
Appreciate you coming in tonight, and as I said, per our rules, we don't respond here at the meeting, but I will be in touch with you tomorrow, and I will coordinate with Ms. Feeny too, in terms of answering questions and see if we can get you more information.
I understand. I'll just add, per Mr. Diggins' theory, in the future, please, there's one thing being considered, the house on, between CVS and the church, please don't have construction trucks go down Millbrook Lane and take my health away further and others, I'm not the only one. And, and please, I know we have this great senior center, but I can't use it, but please think of elders in the community. I'm not saying that you don't, I, but this is a case that we were never notified, we were never notified about the lights, and it's very stressful as we get older. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time to come in tonight.
Thank you very much for listening, thank you for your work.
Okay, is there anybody else for open forum? Anybody through Zoom?
Seeing no answer.
Okay, that, that ends open forum this evening. We are now moving on to our last four items, three of them involve TAC. First, item 17, TAC recommendations, speed limits, and I believe our vice chair from the Transportation Advisory Committee is here this evening. Thank you for?
Hi, I'm Jim Stubbey, I've been in Arlington about 10 years now. I live over on Edge Hill Road, I'm the vice chair of Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Stubbey, for, for your patience, this is a much longer meeting than we?
Absolutely, it's fascinating to come and watch, I actually enjoy it sometimes.
Oh, my lord.
So, so I'm here tonight to come back to you all at a request you sent in tax direction back in January through Mr. Feeny about the speed limit on Broadway particularly, but then expanded to say, let's look at all the speed limits that are over the townway 25. And as part of that activity, I led the working group that actually did this work for TAC. So we went out and looked, and, you know, pretty much every single one of those speed limits is covered by something called a special speed regulation. And if we go back to 2017, we rewind and go, okay, the select board said, yes, it were a 25 mile an hour town, but at the time, we didn't touch the special speed regulations. We left them in place, which means all of those speed limits that are over 25 have been in place ever since. And one of the things I did, we don't have to show it, but I'll just talk through it. So if you hit the Arlington borders on almost all of the major feeders, it says townway 25, 35, 30, townway 25, 30, 25, 30, townway, it's confusing as all get out for people who are driving through town. I don't even know what the speed limits, I've been, I've been driving here 10 years on Summer Street or on Pleasant Street, where you've got six speed limit changes, it just leaves the drivers not really knowing, so they go with the flow of traffic. So our recommendation to come back was to remove all of those special speed regulations, anything that says you're better, you can go faster than 25, we'll remove those regulations or rescind them is what the official term is. You know, they were put in place back in the 70s, there are different times and needs then, it doesn't match with Connect Arlington Plan, certainly doesn't match any Vision Zero goals, where you want to reduce, you know, the speeds down to really, we really don't want any pedestrian deaths and that type of thing, so. Basically, the recommendation is to remove those, put up 25 mile an hour signs, actually, it's called thickly, it's an orange and black sign that says thickly settled district at 25 miles an hour, and I know you may all have heard or not heard over the years, the signs don't do anything. Well, the fact is, the reference that we cited in the actual memo is from the Well, the fact is, the reference that we cited in the actual memo is from the city of Seattle. They put up somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 25 mile an hour signs when they made this switch, and they showed a 20% reduction in crashes, 20% reduction in injuries, and approximately 10% reduction in average speeds at 55 and, you know, the 50% mark in the 85th percentile. So they actually showed real data, they collected real data, but they put those signs up every quarter mile. So they put a lot of signs up, you know. So that's part of our proposal, where we want to start with Broadway and Park, because, you know, they've got a lot of public visibility and people who are very interested in actually making those corridors more safe. So we figured we'd start with them, prove out the process, work out how to rescind things, and then come back to you all with a list for the rest of the things and say, okay, this is the prioritized list, we'd like to work them in. It takes a little bit of time to go through the rescind process. I know John Alessi had talked to the folks up in Andover, and they were saying it was between three and six months to work through mascot to get the rescind in place. So even if we snap our fingers, it's not going to happen instantaneously, but we should get the process started, is kind of the bottom line. So we do have a process that we had put in place. John was thinking he might be the one on the town staff to actually coordinate, but, you know, that's all of the town, your decision as to what. The signage we talked about, and that we also, TAC already did the before speed studies on both Broadway and Park, no surprises on the numbers coming back. Actually, Broadway looks pretty reasonable speed-wise, given the speed limits. It's nothing's out of alignment with the speed limit sort of there today. So that's our before study. You know, do we really expect to see a change? Certainly on Park, I would hope we would see a change. Broadway, we might not see so much, but it's really, it's really a policy decision we're looking at tonight. It's like, we took the first step in 2017, this is kind of finishing, that it's taken the other step to match up. I'm happy to answer any questions. I didn't want to go on too long.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Stubbey. Mr. Feeney, I don't know if you had anything to add to that. I think the discussion before the meeting was, just as you said, we'd start with Park Ave and Broadway, and that's consistent with what your understanding was as well, Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is correct, and I would note that if the board chose to move forward this evening, we are prepared to send that letter on the board's behalf to begin the process forthwith.
Okay, great. And I will start with the board, with Mr. Diggins.
Well, I'd like to, first off, express my appreciation to Mr. Stubbey for all the work that he did as part of the subcommittee that worked on this. When we got it, we were under the impression that we really need to move quickly on this. And I know one of the perhaps concerns was that we moved really fast. But it's not so much that we moved fast, as much as it is that we had a lot of meetings in a short amount of time. I think it was probably like four meetings in addition to TAC meetings in about a six-week period. And Mrs. Stubbey, he just, he did so much work on his own. He said that whenever we had a meeting, he just had a lot of material all prepared for us. And there was really good conversation in the meetings, so I just really, just very grateful for what he did.
And I appreciate you and John and Scott Smith and Ofer as well. Everyone there was plugged in and really wanted to drive it. It's a good team.
Yeah, it was definitely a good team. And so, and I mean, I hesitate to make any motions on this because we, I signed off on it, so, but certainly will be happy to second the motion on it, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we'd mind deferring to you for a motion to just get this going either.
Yeah, for sure. Well, so, yeah, I'll make a motion to support, you know, all the recommendations being in this. Yes, let's get started and figure out what we need to do with mascot in order to rescind them all. I think it would be really good to have a consistent speed limit in town as much as possible, meaning that the top should be 25, except for the roadways that are owned by mascot that are at 30, but we can't change those. There'll be some areas where it's 20, but I feel it's okay to have those, you know. I wouldn't worry about rescinding those.
Frontage road. The road he's referring to is frontage road.
Okay.
I could see the question on your...
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I certainly also would like for the group to look into bringing down the speed limit townwide on local roads, so not the collectors, not like Gray Street, but streets like Windsor, which I live on, which tend to be short streets anyway. I think it sends a signal to everyone that we really do care about the safety, and Cambridge is doing it, Somerville, I think is doing it, Boston is looking into it, and to my surprise, one of the counselors that I would not have thought would have suggested 15 miles per hour, did. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying that it is something that Boston is considering. It may be a little more of a challenge there because some of their roads are longer, but so that's my long-winded motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Second.
Mrs. Mahan, a second?
One question.
Sure.
Thank you so much. As Mr. Diggins already highlighted, just with the materials we have here before us, we have a lot of information. I feel like I was at the meeting. And the only thing that you do touch on here, and I realize the answer is no, but you're going to continue to discuss it, but I just want to bring it to light. When you talk about the 20 mile per hour zones, which are school and safety zones, and when I first read that on page six, I'm like, trying to think where Arlington's safety zones are, and then when I got to seven, we don't have any, right? Just one.
It's in East Arlington, next to the park. I think it's Magnolia.
So we do have under what you provided to us for the 20 mile per hour for school and safety zones. I didn't realize we had any.
And we actually have overlapping SSRs in school zones. I think the school zone signs probably weren't there when the SSRs went in, is my guess. So those signs went up and then never got taken down, so.
Okay, so maybe moving forward in the next year, year and a half, whatever the committee deems appropriate, because you have a lot of other things to deal with. And I see that you highlighted that Lexington Center is a safety zone, which I do slow down when I get there, coming from a really wide open, almost like here we go, speed racer kind of mass ave. So moving forward, I didn't realize we had one, so we do have one safety zone. Any recommendations from TAC in the future regarding expanding that or further defining it, so that it's an option that the town can consider, the board can consider, and/or any areas in Arlington may want to put in a request in the future? So thank you, and I did second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Any other comments? Okay. Oh, sure, Mr. Helms.
I want to add my appreciation for the speed of addressing this and how much work went into it. The amount of work is evident, the quality is excellent as usual. And I think by way of context, the Broadway neighbors, you know, kicked this off early back in January, but then as the board became aware with some additional unfortunate pedestrian crashes on Park Avenue, that regardless of whether speed was involved in those, there's a long history of problems there, and the neighbors really organized and brought to the board's attention that we needed, we really needed to guide the town into doing something about that corridor. And I just want to emphasize that this is a first step, that I think it makes a lot of sense. I live up there, and, you know, I've never thought that a 35 mile an hour zone for two blocks made any sense, and certainly doesn't save anybody a reasonable time. But I think the way you describe this as, it's just confusing for drivers, this is, it's a risk factor I'm very happy to eliminate, and I want to express my appreciation to the neighbors and that corridor who have supported this particular change, I think they'll be very happy and know that more is coming, that the town manager has done a remarkable job of marshaling resources and planning and budget, and it's now in our forthcoming town manager goals that the board will be publishing soon, to continue the work, the study of that corridor, and to take up other traffic calming issues throughout town. And I think that in the next coming months and year or two, the public will see a renewed focus from the town, that the public has really asked for, which is that we will be taking a much newer and, I think, more innovative look at our traffic safety issues. So this is a really good first step. I'm thrilled to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Okay, and I would just say thank you again for the comprehensive report, and as Mr. Helms said, Park Ave in particular, that I think we all became more aware of that, and that change going to 35. And it's, once you start getting going, it's very easy to get up to 40, and that's what we don't want. So that changed, and the neighbors became very involved in, as a first step, Park Ave and Broadway. I'm happy to support this in the process. So on a motion for approval by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor, say hi? Okay, great. So that's item 17, and I have you here for a couple more.
I don't know whether Laura may be on the phone, actually.
Okay. Are you doing the other ones, or just...
If Laura's not on the phone, I can do it.
Yeah.
I think she was on the phone.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
I'll sit and watch.
Item 18 is a TAC recommendation regarding Gray Street and Churchill Ave intersection, and this is another one where we had received correspondence from people who live and use that intersection. So with that, I think Laura is going to join us.
Hello, it's Laura.
Good evening. Hi, thank you for joining us. Yeah, we're on item 18 now, so if you wouldn't mind presenting the recommendation, and we may have some questions.
Oh, of course. I also want to thank Jim for showing up in person today. So when TAC looks at some of these potential crosswalk locations, we check, is it a safe place to cross? Can pedestrians see and be seen in time for vehicles to actually stop for them? Are there safe facilities on the other side? You can't create a crosswalk and a handicap ramp to nothing, to no sidewalk. And how many pedestrians are crossing there? If you have an underutilized crosswalk, drivers will begin to ignore it, and instead of creating driver awareness, it can create complacency from drivers. So with that in mind, I'll talk about our recommendations for Gray Street. We actually went and did pedestrian counts on three different crossings, three different roads along Gray Street, Endicott Road, Valley Road, and also Churchill Avenue. And previously, TAC had done a larger study of Gray Street and had identified Valley Road is a place that had a safe place to cross, that had enough sight distance, enough sort of like, distance from the two different hills for pedestrians to be seen. So we looked at that one more closely. At this time, our recommendation is no action in regards to adding a crosswalk to these locations, and I'll go through some of the reasons why. We do recommend repainting the white edge lines that used to be along Gray Street from Bartlett Avenue to Endicott Avenue, and that should visually narrow the road and perhaps act as a passive traffic calming measure. So to go into some of the observations of Gray Street, it is wide at Valley Road, there's good sight visibility there, but there is a vertical curve or a hill, in Lehman's terms, both to the east and another one to the west. There is no sidewalk on the south side of Gray Street from Churchill Avenue to Valley Road. There are children who cross Gray Street at Valley Road to get to a school bus stop, but most of the children who are walking alone are headed to Addison Middle School, and they didn't cross Gray Street along this stretch. Most of the people that we did observe crossing were adults, particularly adults walking dogs, I think towards Monomy Rocks Park. And there were very few vehicles along Gray Street that were parked that could have blocked or obscured pedestrians trying to cross. So we did three different observations, and none of these streets had enough people crossing to meet our threshold for recommending a crosswalk. And it seems very unlikely that an adult walking their dog is going to go, you know, a block out of their way to use a crosswalk, when they seem to be able to, you know, find their way across the street and do so safely. And the one recommendation that we did come up with was the fact that the street is very wide there. At one time, there were white lines that narrowed it visually, and we think that those should be repainted. Hopefully, that will cue people that when a lane is narrower, they feel like they should go a little bit slower, and that would be our recommendation.
Okay.
Are there any questions you have for me about the memo?
Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, thank you for the work. I know it's been, actually, it's been a year and a half since the residents came to us from this, so I appreciate this follow-up. But despite the time that has passed, I remember the intensity of the parents' concern and the large number of residents who wrote to us in support of that concern about the very frightening incident where a child was almost struck by a car. So this follow-up is important and needed. I wanted to make sure I understand your recent reanalysis of this. So were there any locations in that vicinity that, if you didn't consider pedestrian counts, would meet other requirements, would meet all the other requirements for a crosswalk? Or are you saying that even despite that, there really, even at Valley Road, there's not, there are compliance reasons with regulations?
At Valley Road, there are compliance reasons. There's not a sidewalk on the south side. Crosswalks have to be handicap accessible. So basically, you would be sending someone who's handicapped across the road to, you know, no sidewalk. There's a handicap ramp to nowhere or to nothing, you know, there's not a sidewalk that continues along Valley Road. It's a private way towards Monomy Rocks Park from there, and so they would have to be in the street or on a, like a dirt path if they crossed there. I think that Endicott Road was fairly close to the vertical crest of the hill, and that can create issues with sight, with, you know, drivers not being able to see over the hill and to see pedestrians in the crosswalk. So I think that TAC had previously looked at the sight distances for each of the crossstreets along Gray Street and had said that Valley Road had the best sight distance, the best sort of visibility along this stretch of road, but we saw very few people. I think that the highest number of people we saw was 10, or no, 15 people an hour on the weekend, and those were mostly adults. In my observations, I also looked at the number of people crossing across like, the side streets, and there weren't, like, more people were walking along Gray Street than were actually using the stretch of road to cross. So most of the people, I think they were, they'd picked a side of the road before they had reached Churchill Avenue or Endicott Road. And there just were not that many walkers, very few children crossing here. In my notes attached to the memo, we do note whenever one of the pedestrians is a kid or someone in a stroller, and we didn't observe any school-aged children crossing without a parent. In fact, we saw very few school-aged children out there walking on Gray Street.
Well, that's very helpful. Thank you. I wonder if I could suggest, pending the concurrence of my colleagues, to ask TAC, or first, you know, and ask you if you believe that crosswalks are not an appropriate solution here. I think that the repainting the road lane stripe is an excellent idea, and through the town, through the chair, actually, to ask the town manager, has, because that's a frequent road that I bike and walk, has there been a restriping done recently on that road, or am I just imagining an improvement already?
Mr. Feeney?
I am not sure off the top of my head, but our, what we call long line, our long line painting contract has been underway for a few months now, so it could be true, but if not, make sure that this scope of work is on the list to be completed. not, we can make sure that this scope of work is on the list to be completed.
Yeah, because that clearly makes a lot of sense. But getting back to my question to Ms. Swan is, could the TAC contemplate any other solutions to address this? You know, I understand that you're a data-driven team, and that's to your credit. My view as a policymaker is that we do need to pay attention to the data, but we also need to pay attention to the potential severity and risk, even if it's a low-frequency crossing. And I think that the situation that is described to us, the reason it resonated with many of us back, you know, back in the spring or early part of 2023 when this came to us, is that, you know, the speeds on that road can be similar to Park Avenue in that cars can really get going because of the hills, because of the sight lines, and so any potential crash could be a really bad one, particularly with a younger person. So do you think that if TAC took another bite at this, could, are there other, perhaps signage, perhaps other strategies that you could come up with that might address the situation that was brought before us?
Ms. Swan?
Okay. So I think that slowing cars down creates definitely more safety for pedestrians and other vulnerable users. We also are looking at other new ways of doing neighborhood traffic calming, and Gray Street could be considered for additional measures, perhaps things like a chicane or other ways of doing traffic calming could be considered. But again, the risk of putting in something like a crosswalk when it might give people a false sense of security and it's not in a safe location would be discouraged, I think, by most best engineering practices. But slowing drivers down, I do things like repainting the white stripes or perhaps even having the roadway move laterally, that could be considered. And I could ask, I could ask our committee to look at traffic calming measures along Gray Street. I will say that there were, I would say, fewer cars along that stretch of road. There were definitely large gaps for people to cross, but I think a lot of the longer straight streets like Gray Street in Arlington do tend to get people who were maybe going a little faster than they, than they ideally would be, faster than 25. So we could look at additional traffic calming measures.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Swan. Mr. Sebby, do you want to add anything to that?
I just wanted, I believe Gray Street's got an SSR at 30.
Yeah, it does.
I'm pretty sure it does.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Even if we make that next on the list.
Mr. Hurd, do you want to, again, this doesn't require necessarily a motion of discussion.
I was going to say, it doesn't need a motion.
Go ahead.
No, I just, I appreciate the work on this. I think, yeah, I spent some time on TAC, what seems like many years ago, and I think crosswalks are difficult sometimes because you want to make an area safer, but there's always line of sight. When this inquiry first came to us, you know, I'm very familiar with Churchill, I go down that street safely every morning to work, and Churchill's at the crest of a pretty, probably the steepest section of Gray Street coming up, and there's really no way to make any crossing there safe. I would never cross at Churchill because the cars are just coming up at such a steep incline, they cannot see you. So, you know, I'm glad to see that that is recognized in this report, and as you say, you can't put a crosswalk in and create a false sense of security, and sort of a lesser concern is that the more crosswalks you put, you know, without a crosswalk, you can legally cross the street as long as you find a place that's safe to do so. If you put a crosswalk in somewhere where you know others are going to cross all sections of the street, you're starting, you're creating illegal crossings on that street. But I think, you know, I agree with the recommendation regarding crosswalks in that area. I think this is an area where, you know, people have to be able to do so safely, and for us to designate one specific spot within the context of the traffic patterns is difficult. I do support any traffic calming measures with the first step to be, to make the speed limit lower and help make enforcement easier for our police department, but I certainly, I agree with and anticipated the results of this, this report.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I just have a couple of comments, and our request was about a crosswalk, and you've articulated the reasons why it'd be difficult to put a crosswalk. I will say, I cross that street quite often because if you're coming through Monomy Rocks Park, you want to go to Mass Ave, you either go down to Jason Street, this is one way to do it, it's a connector, and I cross that rather frequently. And the concern I have there is the cars going westbound on Gray Street because they're coming up the hill, and the only sign there is a speed limit sign as they go up the hill, and that's, I think, to Mr. Helms' point, maybe it could be a signage issue there because that's the, to me, the biggest fear. You're crossing that street, and the cars come up that street at a pretty good speed, and I have been in situations where I'm halfway across, and I've got to, I'm not as fast as I used to be, but I've got to get across because they come up there quickly, and they're not expecting to see people because there's no signage, and so there would be a challenge with a crosswalk, but I, I do think there may be an opportunity for signage there, and I know further up Gray Street at Pine Ridge, you've got a crosswalk right on the crest. Now, you can see it as you're coming up the hill and you're coming down, so it's different than what this situation would be. But I think, you know, as opposed to people going eastbound where there's a lot of visibility for people coming from Highland, there isn't as much coming up, and it's, I consider that a danger, even though it's not many people, it is a connector there. So I think Mr. Helms' suggestion is a good one. Sounds like you're willing to look into that maybe for a signage suggestion, even, you know, pedestrians ahead or whatever else could be looked at, because if you looked at that and you cross that street, I'm telling you, I've had more than one occasion where you're surprised when the car gets to the top of the hill and you're not across yet, and you don't have a lot of time and they don't have a lot of time. So that, that remains a concern for me, and it's a strange intersection in terms of this curbing there for a sidewalk at Churchill and Gray, but there's no sidewalk, and you're absolutely right, so. Maybe if that could be looked into, it's, because I think there's still some questions, and I'm sure we'll hear from, from people in that neighborhood, and I've witnessed it myself, so I don't. With that, I don't think we need a motion for that. You've agreed maybe time to take a little bit further review, and we can check back in, but it's really a different question than what we sent you originally, so I appreciate your willingness to look at that. All right, so any other comments or questions on item 18? On to item 19 is a discussion of Churchill Ave, Endicott Road, and Gloucester Street intersection, which is just down the hill from the intersection that we're talking about now, and I think you've got some, a study that was done on that as well.
Yes, yes, thank you. That's also just around the corner from this study area, and yeah, TAC is still developing a memo to send to the select board. So requests like this are usually considered like a lower priority than something like a project like Park Avenue where there has been a pedestrian injury, and our initial assessment was that, you know, this intersection was low-risk to vulnerable users like bicyclists and pedestrians. There are very few crashes here. Two of the three were with parked cars, and it's not near any schools or playgrounds. So we're looking with DPW to sort of formalize the drawing that was sent by the residents, and things like this will probably be in like the, a list of projects where DPW is aware, as funds become available or as work is done in the neighborhood, they'll be accomplished, but they aren't high priority for the safety of pedestrians or other vulnerable users. So we have a couple intersections like that that we need to sort of formalize and send a memo back to the select board about. But now that it's summer and it's a little quieter, these are the sorts of projects that sort of pick up again.
Great, and thank you for that update. Any questions on this item? Okay, thank you for the update on that. That doesn't require any action on our part, but we appreciate you updating us and providing the information, so, and thank you for your patience, both of you, and Mr. Sebby for, you're at the tail end of the agenda tonight, and it was a rather long one, so we appreciate you coming in and joining us. Okay, next, we will move on to item number 20, which is a request for a new memorial and for, and a, I think some additional work at an existing memorial for Alan Hovanas, and Mr. Feeney and I have had some discussions about this. I don't know if you want to start, Mr. Feeney, and then I'll add on, but we, we had some discussions with Mr. Jones, who was referenced here, and I had talked to Mr. Helms about potentially becoming involved in the first request, which is to add on to the existing memorial that's already been approved, but with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Feeney, and then I can elaborate on it as well.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not too much to add, though I will note, Mr. Alan Jones is an attendee of tonight's meeting, I just wanted to point that out. But I had the opportunity to meet with Arlington resident Michael Armanius previously back in the winter to discuss this request and provide some general direction as to how that process may proceed in the future. And I know they formalized, they being the four representatives of the Armenian Cultural Foundation, formalized their request in the form of a letter for the ways they were hoping to memorialize Mr. Hovanas. That correspondence had been sent to the board in early July, and I was just hoping the board could consider this evening, taking that next step of making a referral to the Public Memorial Committee so that formally that step will have been taken, but of course, that meeting would not take place until, you know, the appropriate rendering of any sign or plaque and its location had been thought through so that it could be presented for review by the Public Memorials Committee, and similarly for those who may be charged with reviewing the website content that may be the destination of that QR code to give some time for that to be developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. And I'll just add, where we already have an existing memorial, we've already voted that, and Mr. Helms had expressed interest, we didn't think that that was necessary for a further referral. The Five Blossom Street would be, and we indicated that we would make the referral, but there would not be a meeting until more information came in, and that seemed to be agreeable. So with that, if anybody has any motions, questions, comments, Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move the request to the Public Memorial Committee.
Okay, seconded by, any other discussion? Okay, so on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that concludes item 20, and we are now on to new business. Ms. Mahan?
Mr. Chair, I know you.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Relate on the table the two appointments to council on aging. Do you want to, since they were here? Maybe I make a motion and ask our board administrator to contact them if it's successful to let them know that they were approved, we did see that they were here, and would certainly appreciate maybe if they want to zoom in at a future meeting to coordinate with the office, just so we can speak to them, so.
Thank you for reminding me that, yeah, and this is one of those exceptions sometimes when the individual isn't here, we will continue the meeting. They were here, and unfortunately, we didn't get to them in a timely fashion, so appreciate the motion. Yeah, absolutely.
Approval of Elaine McNulty Knight, and if I can do them both at the same time, since it's the same committee council on aging, Marie Reposa, is that okay? Okay.
Okay, so on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, for approval of the recommendation to the council on aging, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, in our apologies, I will attend the council on aging meeting in September, extend my apologies. We had this come up during one of the remote periods, and it was a member of council on aging, we didn't get to her until 10 o'clock.
Oh, my Lord.
I said, that's our final test for your commitment to the council. That's going too far. All right, so with that, we are now on to new business. Ms. Mahan?
No new business, thank you.
Attorney Cunningham?
No new business, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Feeney?
No new business.
Mr. Diggins? Mrs. Mahan?
Anxiously waiting with you, my colleagues, and the town manager and town council, the decision on August 31st, and whatever comes out of that, I'll have a conversation with the chair about perhaps a future agenda item. September 9th, unless there's a time issue, maybe a little too ambitious, so maybe later on in September or October, but that's it.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Helms?
No new business, except just to remind the chair that I will be out of town on September 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Helms.
You didn't say no new business except.
Mr. Hurd?
No, I just took what acknowledged and mentioned the Arlington House Authority and the Arlington Police Department, they put on the National Night Out, I was there with Mr. Diggins, with many, many, many children that were, got to go in their various vehicles, and also gave an opportunity for certain interest groups to interact with town residents, which is a wild success. They ran out of cotton candy before some people could get theirs, but other than that, it was a great event and really more community policing by the Arlington Police Department and a great way for the Arlington House Authority to reach out to town residents, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, and I have no new business.
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, motion to adjourn made by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.